The transfer of resources from the centre to the states has assumed a great significance with the size of the resource transfer growing from year to year. The transfers are not only on revenue account but they also include loans and advances. The constitution has recognized that the states have larger responsibilities and the resources they have at their command are not adequate to meet such expenditures. The states are closer to the people and therefore the people's requirements have to be fulfilled by them. These transfers are necessary for the state so that they can undertake the expenditure expected of them in this state. A sound system of intergovernmental fiscal transfers constitute the cornerstone of a strong and stable policy. Transfers serve a threefold purpose: One, to bridge the vertical imbalance, that is intergovernmental; Two, to redress the horizontal imbalance, that is inter-jurisdictional or different units of the same level of government; Three, grants to fill up gaps, special problems and to narrow disparities between developed and less developed states; Four, to equalize fiscal capacities or to reduce inter-jurisdictional inequalities in the standards of public services. In order to redress these imbalances, central transfers have come to be accepted as the most effective device of fiscal adjustments. It checks regional economic imbalances, promotes economic growth and encourages states to mobilize large revenues. There are mechanisms for transferring central resources to state governments. In India, fiscal resources are transferred through Finance Commission, Planning Commission and central ministries. Almost all the transfers are based on equity, efficiency and autonomous considerations. Equity can be conceptualized with respect to vertical as well as horizontal. Efficiency can be conceptualized in the context of welfare function that may be augmented by government expenditure at different levels. A good transfer system would effectively discourage fiscal imprudence on grounds of both equity and efficiency. Resources are generally assigned to the central governments whereas states together with the local governments have the larger responsibility with fewer resources. This module would emphasize the mechanism of transfers through three channels: Statutory transfers through Finance Commission, planned transfers through Planning Commission and discretionary transfers through central ministry.
After starting this module, you shall be able to understand mechanism of transfers. You would also be able to know statutory transfers through Finance Commission, know planned transfers through Planning Commission and know discretionary transfers through central ministries. The transfer of resources from centre to the states has assumed great significance with the size of the resource transfer growing from year to year. A sound system of intergovernmental fiscal transfer constitutes the cornerstone of a strong and stable policy. Transfers serves the following purpose: To bridge the vertical imbalance, that is intergovernmental; To redress the horizontal imbalance, that is inter-jurisdictional or different units of the same levels of government; Grants to fill up gaps, special problems and to narrow disparities between developed and less developed states; To equalize fiscal capacities or to reduce inter-jurisdictional inequalities in the standards of public services. In order to redress these imbalances, central transfers have come to be accepted as the most effective device of fiscal adjustments. It checks regional economic imbalances, promotes economic growth and encourages states to mobilize large revenues. There are mechanisms for transferring central resources to state governments. In India, fiscal resources are transferred through Finance Commission, Planning Commission and central ministries. Almost all the transfers are based on equity, efficiency and autonomous considerations. Equity can be conceptualized with respect to vertical as well as horizontal. Efficiency can be conceptualized in the context of welfare function that may be augmented by government expenditure at different levels. On grounds of both equity and efficiencies, resources are generally assigned to the central government whereas states together with the local government have the larger responsibility with fewer resources. Finance Commission is a statutory body with a quasi-judicial character appointed after every five years under Article 280 of the constitution by the order of the president. Its chief function is to make statutory transfers based on recommendations on tax devolution and grants in aid. They are as follows: The distribution between the centre and the states of net proceeds of shareable taxes which are to be or may be divided between them under Chapter 1, Part 12 of the constitution. It is called vertical sharing. Allocation between the states of the respective shares of such proceeds. It is called horizontal sharing. The principles which should govern the grants in aid of revenues of the states out of the consolidated fund of India and the sums to be paid to the states which are in need of assistance by way of grants in aid of their revenues under Article 275 of the constitution. The measures needed to augment the consolidative fund of a state to supplement the resources of the panchayats and the municipalities in the state. Any other matter which may be referred to the constitution by the president in the interests of the sound finance. Over the years, thirteen finance commissions have been appointed whose recommendations have been accepted and implemented. The approach of the Finance Commission in determining transfers consists of: Assessing the overall budgetary requirements of the centre and the states to determine the volume of resources that can be transferred during the period of the recommendations; Forecasting states' own current revenues and non-planned current expenditures; Determining states' share in central tax revenues and distributing them between the states based on a formula; Filling the post-devolution projected gaps between non-planned current expenditures and revenues with grants in aid. This is known as gap filling approach. In India, the Finance Commission transfers are given in the form of tax shares, grants, grants in aid and others. The tax revenue sharing has been used for meeting both vertical and horizontal objectives of transfers. The statutory transfers of the commission have been made to follow the principles of justice in what is called the vertical division of resources between the centre and the states. In the horizontal distribution of these resources among the states, equity has to be taken into consideration of the disparate levels of development of different states. The commissions and the states have been in agreement that the more important instrument of transfer from the centre to the states should be the devolution of taxes with the grant in aid playing a residual role. The tax shares are used to supplement the revenue base of the states. They set out three basic principles: A fair appointment of revenue resources between the centre and the states; Preserving the fiscal autonomy of the states; And ensuring interstate equity without penalizing fiscal prudence, tax effort and growth impulses. The tenth Finance Commission recommended an alternative scheme of devolution whereby after a constitutional amendment, proceeds of all central taxes were to be shared with the state governments. This constitutional change was brought about by the eightieth constitutional amendment which provided for a mandatory sharing of the net proceeds of all central taxes except earmarked cess and surcharges. With this amendment, the separate identity of these arrangements was also abolished.
The transfer of resources from the centre to the states has assumed a great significance with the size of the resource transfer growing from year to year. The transfers are not only on revenue account but they also include loans and advances. The constitution has recognized that the states have larger responsibilities and the resources they have at their command are not adequate to meet such expenditures. The states are closer to the people and therefore the people's requirements have to be fulfilled by them. These transfers are necessary for the state so that they can undertake the expenditure expected of them in this state. A sound system of intergovernmental fiscal transfers constitute the cornerstone of a strong and stable policy. Transfers serve a threefold purpose: One, to bridge the vertical imbalance, that is intergovernmental; Two, to redress the horizontal imbalance, that is inter-jurisdictional or different units of the same level of government; Three, grants to fill up gaps, special problems and to narrow disparities between developed and less developed states; Four, to equalize fiscal capacities or to reduce inter-jurisdictional inequalities in the standards of public services. In order to redress these imbalances, central transfers have come to be accepted as the most effective device of fiscal adjustments. It checks regional economic imbalances, promotes economic growth and encourages states to mobilize large revenues. There are mechanisms for transferring central resources to state governments. In India, fiscal resources are transferred through Finance Commission, Planning Commission and central ministries. Almost all the transfers are based on equity, efficiency and autonomous considerations. Equity can be conceptualized with respect to vertical as well as horizontal. Efficiency can be conceptualized in the context of welfare function that may be augmented by government expenditure at different levels. A good transfer system would effectively discourage fiscal imprudence on grounds of both equity and efficiency. Resources are generally assigned to the central governments whereas states together with the local governments have the larger responsibility with fewer resources. This module would emphasize the mechanism of transfers through three channels: Statutory transfers through Finance Commission, planned transfers through Planning Commission and discretionary transfers through central ministry. The principles and practices governing the central taxes with the states in India have constantly evolved. The manner in which the tax devolution was done are: One, levied by the union but collected by and assigned to the states in which collected. The proceeds shall form part of consolidated funds of India under Article 268. Two, levied and collected by the union under Article 269.1 but assigned to the states in which levied under Article 269.2. Third, levied and collected by the union but shared with the states under Article 270. The tax on agriculture income does not form a part of the consolidated fund but any surcharge on it does under Article 271. Fourth, levied and collected by the union but shared with the states if parliament by law so provides under Article 272. For instance, the union excise duties form part of the consolidated fund of India and the sharing of these proceeds depends upon parliamentary legislation. The earlier finance commissions, say till ninth Finance Commission, use the sharing of income taxes under Article 270 as an instrument of vertical transfers and the sharing of union excise duties under Article 272 as a tool to achieve more horizontal equity. Slide fourteen. Prior to the eightieth amendment, apart from the two main taxes, that is income tax and the union excise duties, two other arrangements for transfers, that is grant in lieu of tax on railway passenger fares and additional excise duties in lieu of sales tax on specified commodities like cotton textiles, tobacco and sugar were in vogue. Both of these arrangements were tax rental arrangements. It means that the original parts to levy the tax was vested with the state governments but were transferred to the centre for the sake of uniformity across states among other reasons. With the eightieth amendment to the constitution, the separate identity of these arrangements was also abolished.
The main alternative channel of fiscal transfer available to the Finance Commission apart from tax revenue sharing is grant in aid of revenues of the states. In Article 275, it is given: To fill fiscal gaps or reduction in revenue deficit; To narrow disparities in the availability of various administrative and social services between developed and less developed states; To meet special problems including natural calamities or any other peculiar circumstances or matters of national concern; To upkeep and maintain the assets created earlier. Once tax devolution to each state has been determined, grants in aid are determined as a residual, which is the difference between the assessed expenditure and the sum of the projected own revenues and shares in central taxes.
The determination of these grants follows from two exercises carried out by the finance commissions. One, assessment of expenditures of each state on revenue account, that is non-plan or total; and two, assessment of own revenues. Once tax devolution to each state has been determined, grants in aid are determined as a residual, which is the difference between the assessed expenditure and the sum of the projected own revenues and shares in the central taxes. In other words, grants in aid under the Finance Commission are meant to fill up a gap which represents expenditure not covered either by own revenues or share in the central taxes. Capital grants were recommended for upgradation of levels of administration.
Each Finance Commission is free to adopt its own formula for determining the entitlements of the various governments. As shown in the table, the main criteria for determining the interstate shares of the states used by the different finance commissions are related to: Population criterion, distance criterion, inverse income criterion, criterion based on area, index of infrastructure, index of fiscal discipline and index of tax effort.
The Finance Commission grants have been given for meeting the assessed revenue gap of the states and also for various other purposes including special needs and upgradation of standards. Gap filling approach that recommends grants under Article 275 to fill the non-plan gap left after the devolution of the shareable tax of the states has been another notable feature of almost all the finance commissions. Grants recommended by the Finance Commission under Article 275 are determined on the basis of projected gaps between non-plan current expenditure and post-tax devolution revenues. It is the determination of these grants that necessitates the Finance Commission to undertake a comprehensive examination of both the central and the state finances.
The Planning Commission is a non-political and permanent apex body for national economic planning. It came into existence on March fifteenth, nineteen fifty by resolution of parliament. It derives its justification and indispensability from the preamble of the constitution which resolves inter alia to secure to all the citizens justice, social, economic and political.
The Planning Commission is a non-political and permanent apex body for national economic planning. It came into existence on March fifteenth, nineteen fifty by a resolution of parliament. It derives its jurisdiction and indispensability from the preamble of the constitution which revolves inter alia to secure to all the citizens justice, social, economic and political. In fact, the constitution lists a number of subjects like regulation and development of industries, interstate rivers and other educational institutions of national importance wherein planning has an important role to play. It assumes further importance in a country like India where the revenues and functions are divided between the centre and the states on one hand and macro level planning has been adopted as an important instrument to achieve growth, equity and social justice in the country on the other. The role of Planning Commission in resource transfers to the states appears to be more than the Finance Commission's though it draws heavily on the Finance Commission's calculations regarding the states' revenue, non-planned expenditures, non-planned services for plans etc. The Planning Commission considers not only the existing basis of taxation but also the rates, public borrowings including external borrowings and other capital receipts and deficit financing. These issues in fact are of considerable importance in the overall context of the monetary, fiscal and economic policies of the nation. An important feature of the planned transfers is that they are discussed at the meeting of the National Development Council and ordinarily consensus is expected on the matters of planned transfers. So far, the twelve five-year plans have been formulated. The purpose of Planning Commission is to recommend to the country a wide spectrum of the resources required for development and how those resources should be utilized. In order to undertake large investment, the Planning Commission recommends transfer of resources from the centre to the state both in the form of revenue transfers and also loan transfers. These transfers are known as central assistance. This amount is given to each state according to a Gadgill formula. This amount along with the resources which can be raised by each state becomes the source for plan.
Let's look at the significant role of Planning Commission in resource transfers to the states. The Planning Commission considers not only the existing basis of taxation but also the rates, public borrowings including external borrowings and other capital receipts and deficit financing. These issues in fact are of considerable importance in the overall context of the monetary, fiscal and economic policies of the nation. An important feature of the planned transfers is that they are discussed at the meeting of the National Development Council and ordinarily consensus is expected on the matter of planned transfers. So far, the twelve five-year plans have been formulated. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to recommend to the country a wide spectrum of the resources required for development and how those resources should be utilized. In order to undertake large investment, the Planning Commission recommends transfer of resources from the centre to the state both in the form of revenue transfers and also loan transfers. These transfers are known as central assistance. This amount is given to each state according to a Gadgill formula. This amount is given to each state according to a Gadgill formula. This amount along with the resources which can be raised by each state becomes the source for planned transfers. Plan transfers are given to meet the general plan needs in such a manner that the objectives of economic planning like growth, balanced regional development etc. are easily achieved. Now, we will look at the plan assistance that is provided for the following categories: Assistance for area programs namely: A) Hill areas; B) tribal areas; C) border areas development programs; D) others like desert development programs. Assistance for externally aided projects also known as assistance under additionally. Assistance under the modified Gadgill formula essentially earmarked for the state's plan. It may be pointed out that the central assistance to the state's plan is given in the form of loan-grant ratio of thirty is to seventy except in the case of special category states wherein the ratio is ten is to ninety. For other programs, there is no such predetermined division of assistance into grants and loans. In the case of central plan assistance, the Planning Commission employs the modified Gadgill formula on the division pool after taking out the proportion for: The externally aided projects; The special central assistance for sub-plans for hill, tribal and border areas; Special category states; The North Eastern Council. The distribution formula known as Gadgill formula has been modified in nineteen eighty and nineteen ninety by the National Development Council. In the approved formula: Population proportion of scheduled tribes get fifty percent weight; Area occupied by scheduled tribe population gets thirty percent weight; And the inverse proportion of state income gets twenty percent weight.
Over the years, the total transfers from the centre are directed partly by the Finance Commission and partly by the Planning Commission. There are some transfers which central ministries make to the states which may not be of large magnitude but are important. Central ministries under miscellaneous financial provision of the Constitution assess states in financing their specific expenditures without necessarily consulting either the Planning Commission or the Finance Commission. These transfers are normally termed as non-plan and non-statutory or discretionary as the funds made so available come outside the purview of the state plan framework. The scheme-wise transfers are justified in terms of their national importance. The purpose of the small saving loans and ways and means advances to fill up the gap so that the central plan funds and other funds risen by the states for plan financing are not utilized for other purposes. Scheme-wide transfers are the most discussed category of transfers in the literature. The different schemes covered here may belong to the union list or the concurrent list or state list. Thus, it covers a wide range of schemes relating to education, agriculture, road infrastructure, natural calamities, improvement of roads, upgrading the salary of the teachers, relief and rehabilitation of displaced persons and other contingent problems arising from time to time and for police, housing etc. These schemes appear to have assumed substantial importance in the priorities of the central government. Let us now summarize what we have studied in this module. A sound system of intergovernmental fiscal transfers constitutes the cornerstone of a strong and stable polity. In India, fiscal resources are transferred through Finance Commission, Planning Commission and central ministries. Finance Commission is a statutory body with a quasi-judicial character appointed after every five years under Article two eighty of the Constitution by the order of the President. Its chief function is to make statutory transfers based on recommendations on tax devolution and grants in aid. The main alternative channel of fiscal transfer available to the Finance Commission apart from tax revenue sharing is grants in aid of revenues of the state under Article two seventy five of the Constitution. Each Finance Commission is free to adopt its own formula for determining the entitlements of the various governments. The main criteria for determining the interstate shares of the states used by different Finance Commissions are related to: Population Criterion, Distance Criterion, Inverse Income Criterion, Criterion Based on Area, Index of Infrastructure, Index of Fiscal Discipline and Index of Tax Effort. The Planning Commission is a non-political body and a permanent apex body for national economic planning. It recommends plan transfers from the centre to the state both in the form of revenue transfers and also loan transfers. The objective of economic planning is to achieve growth, balanced regional development etc. The role of the Planning Commission in resource transfers to the states appears to be more than the Finance Commission's though it draws heavily on the Finance Commission's calculations regarding the state's revenues, non-plan expenditures, non-plan surpluses for plans etc. Special assistance for hill and tribal areas under sub-plans is allocated by the National Development Council's approved formula in which population proportion of scheduled tribes get fifty percent weight; Area occupied by scheduled tribe population gets thirty percent weight; The inverse proportion of state income gets twenty percent weight. Over the years, total transfers from the centre are directed partly by the Finance Commission and partly by the Planning Commission. There are some other transfers which central ministries make to the states which may not be of large magnitude but are important. The discretionary transfers through central ministries under miscellaneous financial provision of the Constitution assess states in financing their specific expenditure without necessarily consulting either the Planning Commission or the Finance Commission.